We have ten.
Very good. Let me just take here one housekeeping thing here. Okay, everyone will be starting in just a second here. Informally welcome, especially those participating from out of town, much appreciated. And noting that the time is 5:32, I'll call this meeting to order. Can everyone hear? Okay? Okay, excellent. Welcome fellow commissioners and members of the public joining us for this special meeting of the County of San Diego's Independent Redistricting Commission. Especially apologies and gratitude for joining on such short notice for this meeting, which I hope will help us accelerate and continue to improve our successful work. Let me turn now to the RC clerk David Hall to provide additional information about today's meeting.
Thank you, Chair Ben. At this time, I'd like to invite any members of the public who wish to provide oral testimony during today's meeting to please review the instructions posted on the redistricting website at drawyourcommunity.com. We ask that individuals who wish to speak submit an online request to speak form in advance for planning purposes. All timely requests to speak from a public made at today's meeting on any of the items listed on today's agenda will be honored regardless of whether you have submitted an advanced request. Agendas, minutes, and supporting materials for the commission's meetings are posted on the redistricting website, including instructions to request translation. Meeting agendas are translated into Spanish, Vietnamese, Chinese, Tagalog, Arabic, Japanese, Korean, and Laotian as required by law. I'd also like to note that we've received 28 e-comments, five emails, and two letters related to redistricting that were distributed to the commission and posted online. I'd like to note as well that the commission received several general requests to speak or requests to speak under non-agenda public communication. The commission appreciates your interest. As this is a special meeting, non-agenda public communication is not part of today's agenda. The public will be provided the opportunity to speak on any of the items that are listed on today's agenda. The log of correspondence received, including comments that have been submitted through the community builder tool, has been updated and provided to the commissioners and is posted on the IRC website. Correspondence received is posted on the website with today's meeting materials and the commission's log of ex parte communications has been updated on the IRC website. Chair Ben.
Thank you very much, David. Before you proceed, let me just clarify on the public statements because I wasn't aware that either. I would strongly suggest that the public be aware that under both item five, the demographic fix services update on e-commerce and communities of interest as well as item 10, the ABA SD preliminary port on pre-mapping public hearings and lessons learned, and especially presentation on targeted outreach for draft map public hearings. We can interpret those fairly liberally to invite public comment. So for those members of the public who were hoping to speak on non-agenda items, I would ask you to think through your comments, see if there's direct relevance to communities of interest or any of the public outreach we've been doing. And we can see if that would be an appropriate way for public comment. Clerk call, I didn't mean to surprise you with that. Is that acceptable by your?
Absolutely.
Very good. Thank you.
And if you'd like to name those advanced requests, I can call them forward on item number five.
Excellent. We'll aim for that then. Thank you. So the next item on the agenda is the roll call. David, would you please call the rolls?
Thank you. Before I call the roll, I'd like to note for the record that the commissioners are participating via teleconference and as such, all votes will be handled by a roll call vote. I'll ask the commissioners to say here or present when called upon. Chair Ben?
Here.
Vice Chair Catalina?
Here.
Vice Chair Garcia?
Here.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Chen?
Here.
Commissioner Diaz? Commissioner Dostal? Commissioner Hansen?
Here.
Commissioner Inman?
Here.
Commissioner Krugliak? Commissioner Krugliak?
Sorry, here.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Larson?
Here.
Commissioner Potts?
Here.
Commissioner Russ?
Here.
Commissioner Serbin? Chair Ben, with 11 commissioners present, you do have a quorum.
Thank you, David. And I will note that both those commissioners here and those who are not here, there are a number who are having very delicate challenges at home. Our sympathies, of course, go to them, and I know everyone is going to devote whatever time they can to the commission, even while we all agree family comes first. So thank you for all that. Next item is discussion.
Chairman, point of order, please. Yes, so this is Commissioner Larson speaking. We have a very busy agenda this evening. And I note that we have a closed session toward the end of the meeting. I think we're in a probable crisis at the moment that we're going to be talking about during the.
Commissioner, Commissioner, I'll ask you first though to state your point of order upfront. Thank you.
Okay, I move that we change the agenda order and move the item number 12 up earlier in the agenda so that we don't have a speaking about it at the last moment.
Commissioner, if you don't mind, I'll jump in there. That has indeed been on my mind. My intent, commissioners, is to see how we move through the first few items. And in particular, we may have shorter discussions on some items. But Commissioner Larson, I do agree, we may have to change the agenda. My intent, if that's okay with the commission, is to work through what we can as quickly and efficiently as possible. And sometime after 6:30, I may request a motion to suspend the rules and immediately bring the closed session to the agenda. Will that be acceptable, Commissioner Larson? You're muted. You're muted, Commissioner Larson?
Okay, it's acceptable, and we don't want to wait till 9:30 or 10 o'clock to have a long discussion on a very important topic. So I appreciate your changing the rules.
Absolutely. We'll take that up in not too long. Thank you. All right. So moving efficiently, as I just said, the next item, agenda item three is discussion and possible approval of a resolution authorizing continuance of teleconference public meetings. Bear with me, commissioners, there are some items I have to read into the record here. This item follows the governor's approval of AB 361 earlier this year, which allows for a simplified method for virtual participation by commissioners at IRC meetings in certain circumstances and based on certain findings, and is authorized by the IRC by resolution on October 7th. State law requires that the IRC update its findings and prove a similar resolution within 30 days of its original resolution to continue holding meetings by simplified teleconference procedures. David, are there any requests from the public to speak on this agenda item?
Thank you, Chair Ben. None in advance of today's meeting, but if any member of the public would like to address the commission on the continuance of teleconference public meetings, you're welcome to do so at this time. Please raise a virtual hand by clicking the raise hand button on Zoom or by pressing star nine if you're dialing in by phone. Not seeing any requests to speak. That concludes public comment on this item, Chair Ben.
Thank you, David. Do we have a motion, commissioners, for approval of the resolution of the County of San Diego Independent Redistricting Commission authorizing continuance of teleconference public meetings pursuant to government code section 54953 as included with the agenda items?
So moved.
Motion from Commissioner Russ, second by Commissioner Larson. Any discussion? Seeing none, David, would you please call the roll for a vote?
Thank you, Chair Ben. I'll note that commissioners' names will continue to be called in random order. Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Co-Vice Chair Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Russ?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Inman?
Aye.
Chair Ben?
Aye.
Commissioner Hansen?
Aye.
Commissioner Dostal, I believe, is still absent. Commissioner Potts?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Co-Vice Chair Garcia? I'm sorry, Co-Vice Chair Catalina?
It's hard. It's, that is an eye. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Serbin is absent. Commissioner Krugliak?
Aye.
Commissioner Diaz, I believe, is still absent. Chair Ben, that motion passes unanimously with all commissioners who are present voting aye.
Thank you, David. Thank you, commissioners. Next, we have item four on the agenda, discussion and possible approval of a revised regular meeting schedule. This item is a simple update to add the Chula Vista location of our upcoming regular meeting on November 1st in conjunction with the first draft map public hearing. We'll begin that session, all those meetings, at 5:00 PM in the Chula Vista City Hall Council chambers with details posted on the IRC website. I will note that the redistricting timeline, including the full schedule of all IRC regular meetings, special meetings, and draft map public hearings was sent to commissioners with these tonight's agenda items and is posted on the redistricting website. David, are there any requests from the public to speak on this agenda item?
Thank you, Chair Ben. None in advance of today's meeting, but if any member of the public would like to speak to the commission on the revised regular meeting schedule, you're welcome to do so by pressing the raise hand button on Zoom or by pressing star nine if you're dialing in by phone. Not seeing any requests to speak. That concludes public comment on this item, Chair Ben.
Thank you, David. Do we have a motion, commissioners, to approve the revised regular meeting schedule as included with the agenda materials?
So moved.
I see Commissioner Chen, seconded by Commissioner Brown. Thank you very much. Any discussion? Seeing none, David, would you please call the roll for a vote?
Thank you, Chair Ben. Commissioner Russ?
Aye.
Commissioner Dostal, I believe, is still absent. Commissioner Krugliak?
Aye.
Commissioner Potts?
Aye.
Commissioner Inman?
Aye.
Co-Vice Chair Catalina?
Aye.
Commissioner Serbin, I believe, is still absent. Commissioner Hansen?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Co-Vice Chair Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Diaz, I believe, is still absent. Chair Ben?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Chair Ben, that motion passes with all commissioners who are present voting aye.
Thank you again, and I just want to again reinforce to the public, November 1st, 5:00 PM is both our first draft map public hearing and our next regular meeting to consider maps. Both of those start Monday at 5:00 in Chula Vista. We'll have more details later, and the details are posted on the website. We now move to item five, demographic services update from the IRC's demographer, Flow Analytics, on a tool to help the IRC and the public organize the volume of public input and comments we have received regarding communities of interest. A link to this tool and basic instructions were provided with the agenda materials for tonight's meeting, and I believe are also posted. The COI information, of course, remains critical to the IRC's mapping discussions and decisions. In a moment, I'll ask close Alex Brash to tell us more about the web viewer tool that can assist with examining the IRC's draft maps, including draft maps five through eight that will be considered at our regular meeting on November 1st, as well as maps submitted by the public. However, before I turn to Alex, let me also mention that the IRC has received some comments related to numbering of districts in the draft maps and how that numbering compares to numbering for existing supervisory districts. All that were presented at our last meeting on October 21st, and again, will be considered at our upcoming November 1st meeting. The IRC is aware of this issue and its significance for members of the public, as well as for the IRC. We will address this issue in more detail at our next meeting on November 1st, when IRC draft maps five through eight will be on the agenda for consideration, or actually are on the agenda for consideration. At that time, it would be appropriate for commissioners to consider directions to flow to address renumbering of the districts as part of the revisions to the draft maps. So in other words, please be looking over those draft maps and considering what would be a good way to number them in light of the comments we've been receiving. Flow and IRC staff will continue to look into the district numbering issue, and will be ready to discuss and implement any IRC decisions on it. Thank you all for your patience on that, but most of all, thanks to Alex. Alex, the floor is now yours. And I'm sorry, if it's John McKenzie, I'll correct myself. I'm not hearing anything. Hello, can you hear me? There we go. All right, and now I'm going to, I believe you see my screen? Yes, we do, John. Thank you. Very good. All right. Thank you. So in response to a number of requests from the from the commission in order to help illustrate the public comments and the themes that we have been seeing in a way that relates both the geography, the location where those themes are coming from, as well as the provide a sort of amount to the themes that we're seeing, we have created a public comment and testimony tracker. And this tool will help both the commission as well as the public identify the comments, the types of comments that are coming in, where they're coming from, and sort of an easier way to sort through them and sort of digest all of this information. As you know, you all know, we've received over 600 of these comments. And so this tool incorporates comments that were received during testimony. They are comments that were submitted through the e-comment tool, as well as comments provided through our community builder tool and including the text that was provided with the polygons that have been drawn related to that. I will do a very quick demo to show you how this works, but we have a map as well as a word cloud showing the the themes that have been tagged in. We are going through and tagging these themes and adding them into this tool. And below the word cloud and the map, there is a table that lists each of the comments. Now, I should say, at this point, we have gotten through, in the last week, about 200 of the comments. And we will be, over the next several days, continuing to read through each comment, tag them with appropriate categories, and assign them to their appropriate location. And this tool will continue to be updated throughout the course of this project. It's going to take us several days, maybe a week's time to get completely caught up. But once we do get caught up, we will continue to update this tool on a regular basis. So I'll start by showing that one, some of the features here are that you can click on any word in the word cloud, and it's going to filter and show you all of the cities or communities that have been tagged with one of these, the theme that you have chosen here, and it will also then filter the table so that you can see the actual comments that have been tagged with that theme. It works the other way as well. You can click on a particular area and see all of the themes that have been associated with that area, as well as all of the all of the comments associated with that, too. So like I said, we are going through, reading through these comments, tagging them with themes that we're seeing through there. This is really meant to be an organizer. There are a lot, obviously, a lot of comments, and this seems like a way that would help both the public and the commission be able to sort of digest that information, get a sense of where certain themes are coming from within the county. We've also just included a basic link to the submit any comment, as well as a link to our community builder tool so that folks can go there if they are reading this and decide to draw their own boundaries. So I will keep it brief and let you know that this tool is now available. I believe it can be linked, if it's not linked to from the website now, will be very shortly. And just reiterate that it is not, it does not currently contain all of the comments. We are working through those, and they will be ready as soon as we are able to provide them. We will have all the comments in there, and then once we have that, we will update it on a regular basis. But we are still working through those. Like I said, I think we have around 200. But we will continue, continue moving forward on this. Very good. Um, sorry. So with that, David, let me first ask if there are any comments, any requests from the public to speak on this item?
Thank you, Chair Ben. We have one speaker who submitted a request form on this item specifically. We also received seven additional requests to speak. If your comments relate to this item, I invite you to raise a virtual hand at this time. Begin with the individual who specified this item. Kevin Stevenson, you have three minutes to address the commission.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Yes.
Great, great. Okay. Hi, yeah, I just wanted to I wanted to emphasize the importance of keeping North County together in the same district, particularly communities like Oceanside, Escondido, Valley Center, San Marcos, Vista, Paula, Bonzol, et cetera. From my experience, people in Escondido tend to have more in common with folks in San Marcos and Oceanside than people in Carlsbad and Encinitas. There's a bit of a wealth, a wealth gap. There's a demographic difference. And the last thing I want is for some of our working class communities out here in North County inland feeling left out of representation in, on the countywide level. I want to make sure that the residents in my area get the best representation possible. And so I just want to emphasize how important it is to keep these, these communities together in one district. I know that the, the math of splitting these districts within a nearly even population is difficult, but I'm just hoping there is a way to keep Escondido, Oceanside, San Marcos, and some of the other communities up to the county line connected. So yeah, that's pretty much all I have to say.
Thank you. For me, Abraham, you have three minutes.
Hi, commissioners, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Awesome. Thank you. So I just wanted to comment and say that we're super excited to participate in these upcoming post-mapping hearings. And we also want to help prepare community members and make the process smooth for all of us. So my question is, how different will these post-mapping testimonies and public input, how different will that be from the pre-mapping COI testimonies? Will people still have three minutes to comment? And will we also have an option to do group presentations? Thank you so much.
Thank you. John Minto, you have three minutes to address the commission. Ask the commission staff, I'm able to allow this person to talk. Can you? I'm going to come back to John Minto. I'll try Eric, Erica Pinto.
Hi, good evening.
Thank you. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Erica Pinto. I'm the chairwoman of the Humul Indian Village of California. We're located right off of Highway 94, 20 minutes east of downtown San Diego. I know you all have a difficult task, and I do appreciate you for your service. I'm calling today as a representative of my tribe, as well as a member of the Kumiai, who have inhabited the region since the beginning of time. Our tribal community is really the original community of interest, as the original human inhabitants of the region. As such, we believe our tribal reservations, as they currently exist, should continue to be included in a district representative of the unincorporated community in eastern San Diego County, including my reservation, Humul Indian Village. Our communities and neighbors are important to us, as well as the intergovernmental ties we have formed over the years. Our communities are united with like interests in the rural East County are best represented in one district, as they have been for many years. I very much appreciate your consideration of our desires as you reevaluate these maps for the next iteration. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Going to try John Minto. You have three minutes to address the commission. You may need to unmute yourself, Mr. Minto.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, I have some computer connection problems there for a moment. Chair, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'll make this as quick as possible because I know time is important. I'm not a stranger to this. I'm the mayor of the city of Santee. I have a great collaboration going on with all the cities in the East County. I've had the opportunity, it's great to see that Chairman Pinto was on the, Chairwoman Pinto was on the air. There's one of the things I want to talk about is all of the collaborations that go on in East County. And I'm talking about collaborations that have been going on for 50 to 60 years. And those are city councils, water districts, school districts, and most importantly, tribal councils. I spent six years as the chairperson of the Sandag Borders Committee, and I did extensive work with tribal communities and councils. And it is important to keep them together, as well as the rest of East County. It's hard for me to understand how these districts have been broken up the way they have that would take, for instance, my city and put it nestled with somebody downtown San Diego, or Hillcrest San Diego, or other parts of San Diego that are very coastal and very different from the way we think here. So I appreciate your time. I really appreciate you taking another look at how these things are broken up here and make sure that the San Diego East County remains the San Diego East County. It's a viable place where we can do so much, and we have such a great voice in helping out the rest of the county. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Travis Leon?
Hi, this is Travis Lyon. Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are unmuted. We can hear you.
Hey, thank you so much for this opportunity to present testimony. My name is Travis Lyon. I'm the chair of the Alpine Community Planning Group, resident of Alpine and a school board member in Alpine. I want to echo some of the comments just presented from Mayor Minto. As a resident of Alpine, my, my local government consists of a planning group and a school district and a fire district in Alpine. But there's so much commonality in the government that represents my community with the other East County communities of District Two. We're members of the Grossmont Healthcare District, the Grossmont Union High School District, the Grossmont Quyamaca College District, and we get our product from Padre Dam. I understand the challenges in the commission's task in redistricting, but I really want to encourage him to consider the commonality in governments that have been formed over, like Mayor Minto said, close to 60 years. I'm very concerned with the draft maps to date that show my community not only split up in some ways, but also we would, we would have a supervisor who does not represent the same areas where my kids would go to high school. These are the type of disjointed government that leads to misrepresentation and disenfranchising. So I would encourage the commission to consider, at the very least, looking at Alpine situation and realizing when we get all our other government from a similar area in El Cajon and Santee, but also to consider the benefits of keeping communities together that have commonality in government, and consider at a minimum, modifying the existing boundaries to the minimal extent possible. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Any other member of the public who would like to address the commission on this item, whether you have submitted an advanced request or not, is welcome to raise a virtual hand at this time by pressing the raise hand button on Zoom or by pressing star nine if you're dialing in by phone. Frank Hilliker, you have three minutes to address the commission. You may need to unmute yourself.
There we go. Got me?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. My name is, my name again is Frank Hilliker, and I'm the owner of Hilliker's Ranch Fresh Eggs in Lakeside. I'm also elected to Lakeside Water District Board of Directors, and I represent Lakeside San Diego County Water Authority. So my home and business are located in Lakeside, and Lakeside should.
Lakeside should be a part of other East County areas. We have much more in common with Ramona, Poway, Santee, El Cajon, and Alpine than we do with some of the areas you've seen us with. One or two of the maps splits Lakeside in half. Currently, the East County communities work together on several issues, which you've heard. And we, and most importantly, I think we share a lot of common school boundaries. The East County schools filter into the Grossmont District, and as Mr. Lyon said, it, it kind of all works together, and we need to be, be all together as one. I just would hope that, that the commissioners keep community interest together and keep East County together. Thank you very much. I have submitted to speak, but I'm not sure if it went through, so if I come up again, you can just bite down to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker has listed themselves as community group. And again, I'm having some technical issues allowing them to speak. I'm going to go to Tracy Morgan. Tracy Morgan, you have three minutes to address the commission.
Thank you. We were very surprised at the very last minute, you know, issuance of this agenda. I think with many of the people who live in the East County, we want to see the districts, you know, stay representative of what, you know, East County has always been, and that is very much, you know, it's been an underserved, you know, area. And so to throw City of San Diego into that district, the District Two for the Supervisory District is, is insane. So anyway, that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to make sure that all the communities of concern that are part of that district stay part of that district. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not able to allow community groups to talk, so I'm going to ask the IRC staff if they're able to do so. Community groups has lowered their hand. Perhaps they're going to raise their hand again in an attempt.
Community group is here. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
This is Robin Maxson. I am Chair of the Ramona Community Planning Group. Sorry about that interesting label. As you work to adjust the county district areas and to keep communities together, do consider the East County sister communities of Ramona, Lakeside, and Alpine. We share a common rural, country-oriented life. The agricultural businesses, such as wineries and egg ranches, and equestrian events, such as Ramona's rodeo and Lakeside's rodeo, and many animal rescues. There's lions, tigers, and bears in Alpine, and frosted faces in Ramona. Keltrans and Sandig recognize the common culture and community connectedness of Ramona, Lakeside area, they, including Poway. They have the San Vicente Comprehensive Multimodal Corridor Plan. Say that 10 times fast. It encompasses all the communities among 67, from Ramona down to Lakeside, because we are a lifeline, lifeline for workers. You've heard of the tool belt, those who have to commute up and down the roadway between our communities and social activities, such as the ones I mentioned previously. As you, as you do this difficult work to redraw lines, please consider we have a historical and current community connection. Please keep our communities together, and thank you for this time.
Thank you. Billy Joe Jannon, you have three minutes to address the commission.
Hello, my name is Billy Joe Jannon. I am speaking on behalf of myself, although the planning group I chair is planning to issue an opinion on, on the current breakdown. I just want to express that I'm kind of astonished at the way you have broken up districts and communities all across the backcountry. We have commonality from, from El Cajon out to Hacama, as well as from Humul out to Hacama, on both of those corridors. All of that should be kept together. I, I cannot, I must confess, see the reasoning for separating them in a way that truly creates a complete lack of having, of clout. I mean, the, the voters are so diluted in the rural area that they will never have any influence over their own destiny. They will never have any influence over elections. I, I just, I feel like, I hope that, that the presenter at our meeting on the ninth is going to have an explanation for why you would want to do that. But from Alpine, from, from, from El Cajon, from Alpine, all the way out, should all be kept together and should not be governed by people who don't understand, for instance, groundwater. Most of that is east of the County Water Authority. And our supervisor needs to be someone who lives near or, or, or in that area. Or we will just never be correctly represented. That's it.
Thank you. Lindsay Jones, you have three minutes to address the commission.
Okay, hi, thank you for having me. My name is Lindsay Jones. I'm a teacher in North County. I've lived here my entire life. Raised my kids here. My family is from here. I moved, my husband and I moved from Carlsbad to Vista to Fallbrook, and we are very concerned with the potential of breaking up the North County District. We are very reliant upon the relationship that the fire departments have with North County Fire, Oceanside, and Vista. They provide a relative amount of support for one another, and there is no hospital in Fallbrook. So I know that the sheriff and the fire department work largely with one another to help one another, especially during fire season, or if there's an emergency. And we have a going relationship with the other cities in regards to making roads safer by making the bike paths more user-friendly from Fallbrook to Oceanside, and that creates a big safety. You know, it makes things a lot safer for our communities, so that we're not running into bikers. We really utilize the funding and we all work together very well in North County and always have. Even all of the high school communities are all very close and tight up here. And I just know that these rural communities rely on the city. And I know that the city relies on, the Oceanside and the Vista and San Marcos rely on Fallbrook and Valley Center and Bonzal. My kids go to Bonzal Unified, and I know that Bonzal Unified really helps Oceanside with their public school district by taking a majority of, or a big chunk of the eastern Oceanside students at Bonzal West. And so I know that that would create a big problem for Oceanside School District, which they already have issues with overpopulation. And it would also create a big problem for Bonzal, because we rely on those students to support our, our numbers as well. So we need to continue to keep North County as, we're a city of interest. We all, we all work together very well, and we've, we would just hate to see the relationship between each city be broken up. Thank you for everything you're doing. We really hope that you would keep North County all together for very many reasons. I hope that, I hope that I helped communicate those. Have a great night, thank you.
Thank you. Not seeing any other virtual hands indicating an interest to speak on this agenda item. So Chair Bing, that concludes public comment on this item. We have one, I'm sorry, we have one more late request to speak. Telephone number ending 6978. You have three minutes to address the commission.
Yes, good evening. Thank you for taking my comments. I am a longtime resident of the Humul area, and also a member of our planning group for over close to 30 years. The idea of not considering the uniqueness of our rural areas and is just not acceptable. It causes too much trouble for the people that have lived in this area for so many years. Reviewing the, your published information online, one of the charts was the community plan. Well, I was looking at the community plans as they are for the county, as community, where the community is formed and what interests they have. I was surprised in note at the Humul D'Alzora Planning Group, the Petrero Planning Group, the Taccatis Planning Group, the Bolivar Planning Group, Habunga, Hacama Planning Group, the Quyamaca Planning Group, the Lake Moreno Campo Planning Group, and the Mountain Empire Planning Group were not even considered. Were not even on your list of separate communities that have an inch, each, a general interest with the rest of the rural areas, but have their own special items that make them unique in their own little area. So putting parts of unincorporated areas in with high-density city dwellers is just a disservice to the, the many people that live out, out in the rural areas. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Not seeing any other virtual hands, that concludes public comment on this item, Chair Bing.
Thank you very much to those members of the public who submitted comments. We really do appreciate it. And I will answer one speaker in particular. Yes, it does help. It helps a lot. And it is an ongoing process. We'll have a lot more to say about this at our meeting on Monday. In the meantime, I know that our staff is taking careful note of all the comments, and we will address them in due course, including answers to questions speaker asked regarding, speakers asked regarding format for future meetings and how these things will be discussed. So we'll have a lot more about that. Returning now to our agenda, this is an informational item that we're on right now with the demographic services update. But I'll open the floor now for Commissioners' questions and comments to John McKenzie from Flow or to SPOC Ken Inman. I'll invite both of them to step in as needed. Floor's open for questions. Commissioner Brown. You are muted.
I was unmuted for a long time, and then I muted myself right before that. Hi, John, how are you doing? I have a quick question for you. The count, you know, all the different ideas that came up for each of the comments that came in. Do you just take one of those and it gets put onto the map, or is, do all of them get put on to the map at some point? How do you balance that out?
Yeah, so, oh, sorry. Okay. So not one, but not, not necessarily all. We are tagging them with up to three different tags for theme and three different tags for area. And the reason for it being three is it's, it's a little bit of a guessing game, that you got to come up, come to the right number. But in order to standardize it and have it in something that will be useful and not completely scattered, you kind of have to set it, but at the same time, we want to recognize that in a lot of cases, there are more than one common theme. And there are a lot of cases where it's more than one area. A lot of times you hear multiple communities being grouped together, like Fallbrook and Bonzal, and so we want to capture that. But at the same time, we do just have to think about if we have, if we list everything, where there are cases where people list, you know, like 20 different themes or something, our tags won't be effective. So the idea that limiting it to three and three, it captures enough detail that you're going to sort of really be able to see those themes at the high level, and then also find the appropriate comments related to those themes without making the tool just too complicated to use.
Thank you. Great job. That's going to be helpful.
Co-Vice Chair Garcia, then Commissioner Ponce.
Yes, I don't have a question. I just wanted to thank you for that effort. I've played around and with the tool, and I think it's going to be really, really useful to sort of track by theme and by, by location, the kind of public input that we're getting. I appreciate that.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Ponce.
Yes, is this an opportunity to talk about the mall foster maps, or is that should be deferred to a later conversation?
I'm sorry, to which maps?
The mall foster maps, where they have the population, race, ethnicity, dot density. Insert in there.
I, so yeah.
Should that be later? I'm okay to wait.
But that's Monday. Actually, if I don't know, if that's too, too late for your Commissioner Ponce, but that goes, that goes with what we were talking about Monday.
Okay, I can wait until Monday. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? John, I'll just ask, because I, I had very limited time to look at the new tool, but I do appreciate it. Is unincorporated one of those tags?
It may not be, but we can certainly make it one.
I think, given the themes we've heard and what I've seen in the comments, that would be good. I'd also recommend taking a look at a word like rural. Again, I don't want to pollute too much, but unincorporated, because it's a direct part of our mandate, I think would be a good one to have.
Absolutely, we can do that.
Okay. John, thank you very much. Again, thank you, Members of the Public, and as always, thank you Commissioners. Moving on to item six, consideration of including relevant communities of interest or COI data related to San Diego County that has been submitted to California's State Citizens Redistricting Commission, as well as similarly relevant COI data submitted to the City of San Diego Redistricting Commission into the Record of Proceedings before the IRC. I think Commissioners will remember this issue, having been discussed before, but we thought it was ripe for discussion today. Let me turn to Co-Vice Chair Katerina, if she's prepared, for some brief comments on this topic. Amy? The floor is yours.
I am prepared to be brief, so I think you'll all appreciate that. And, and I certainly, though, and I know John and I have discussed this, I'm certainly available to take any questions, but I'll, I'll give you, if you will, the, the top-line situation. So Rosette and I attended the meeting that the Special Point of Contact Inman has with staff and Flow on Monday, and we talked about this issue. And, and while there are a lot of comments on the CRC database right now, and you can go, and they were included in our package, there are over 10,500 comments right now. And if you do a search for the word San Diego County, you come up with 24 comments. Now, those could be repeated multiply in the same section or not. There were 373 individual comments with the word San Diego. So out of that 10,000 plus, there are somewhere between 24 and 333 comments on San Diego County. The challenge that we face with this, when you think about what the, the state commission is doing, it's very broad and large groups. So it's the State Senate, the State Assembly, the Board of Equalization in our congressional districts. So comments are coming in specifically for those issues. So I went through the comments and, and tried to come up with some, some, make some sense of it that would, might help us make a decision what to do. And, and the reality is, it's very difficult, and it's difficult for a number of reasons. One main reason is that we may miss something. If we're only looking for San Diego, somebody could be talking about, let's say, Lakeside, and we would miss it, because we were not searching for that. So that almost leads to the point where you have to look through almost every comment, and it is a large number of comments that were not intended to focus on our issues necessarily. There may be some overlap, and that gets me to the second thing I noticed is that there is overlap, and much of that overlap repeats what we've already heard from our communities of interest. The second piece that I will show, well, and the final piece I will share is that this could be done in the same format that our COI work was done, that John just showed us, which, by the way, John's fabulous. But it's quite extensive, and it would take a considerable effort. And it leads you to the discussion of how do we decide? How does one person decide which comment to include and which comment not to include? What applies and what doesn't apply? So it does become a very complex process that we would have to consider. And Flow has said that while they could do it, they don't have the manpower at this time, unless something's changed. So please correct me, John. So at the moment, we have the link and the information in our package today, and it's up to us to decide what we want to do with that, you know, going forward. And I think, I hope that's sufficient, but that's where I'd like to stop, if that's okay.
Thank you. I thought that was sufficient. But as always, I'll want to make sure that John McKenzie or SPOC Commissioner Inman don't have anything to add. If you do, this is a good time to add it. Very good. Thank you very much for that, Amy. Not so much for it being brief, but it's concise, because I think you covered a lot of ground and did it very well. David, are there any requests from the public to speak on this agenda?
Thank you, Chair Ben. We do have one request from the public in advance who requested to speak on this item. I'd also like to invite any other members of the public who'd like to address the commission on this item to please raise a virtual hand at this time by pressing the raise hand button on Zoom or by pressing star nine if you're dialing in by phone. First speaker is Tracy Morgan Hollingsworth. You have three minutes to address the commission. You may need to unmute yourself. We're not hearing you, Tracy. There you go. I think you're unmuted now.
Yeah, I previously testified that we were caught by surprise about this hearing, and we're wanting to make sure that the East County District areas are are preserved. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public would like to address the commission? You're welcome to raise a virtual hand at this time. Not seeing any virtual hands. That concludes public testimony on this item, Chair Ben.
Thank you very much, David. Commissioners, this is an action item, so we would need a motion before any discussion. I'll ask as a way to suggest a framework for discussion. Is there a motion to approve in principle the inclusion of relevant COI data submitted to the CCRC for San Diego County and to the City of San Diego Redistricting Commission respectively into the Record of Proceedings before the IRC, with the understanding that Flow Analytics and IRC staff will return to the IRC if additional guidance or new financial resources are required? Do I have such a motion? Moved by Commissioner Inman. Do I have a second? Commissioner, Co-Vice Chair Garcia, thank you. Discussion. Co-Vice Chair Garcia, please.
Just a couple of questions for point of clarification. Is the button, or whatever you want to call it, on our website that would link us to the CCRC data, is that available yet? Or is that one of the first steps that we would be taking? Because it was my understanding that that was relatively simple thing to do is to link to the San Diego County data just by putting some sort of a, you know, button that we could press at our website.
I believe what we are going to have is the database extracted from the state, and you would link directly to that database. It would look like an Excel spreadsheet, essentially.
And then, and then the difficult next step would be actually trying to figure out how to actually use that data or, you know, actually import it into Flow system. Is that correct? Do I understand that correctly?
Yeah, that would be after we incorporate all of our own core testimony e-comment. Then it could be a process where we ask commissioners if there are certain records that they would want to have included in our official database for consideration, as well as task flow is possibly trying to go through. The problem with tasking flow, though, is, as was mentioned earlier, flow isn't necessarily the right entity to go through and decide what gets included and what doesn't get included. And so we would have to further discuss that, I think, at a future meeting.
Is it possible to, I mean, do we have to integrate it into our COI data? Or is there, would it be possible or useful if we were to just sort of keep it separate? This is the CCRC COI data that we could still use and read through and, you know, all of that, but it wouldn't necessarily have to go in. And I'm wondering if that might even be better simply because the source is, wasn't intended really for the IRC. Thank you.
Yeah, that's what we will have once we put that database on our website. We'll have a spreadsheet. It's not exactly a user-friendly way to sort through it, but we will have the spreadsheet. Now, the question is, will we develop a tool like what we have for our own data to sit on top of that? I would say that would be something we would have to discuss more. Does that answer your question?
Thank you, Commissioner Ponce.
Yes, I understand why some would feel the need to use this data, but I'm not compelled to use the statewide data because there's a lot to do for Flow Analytics, specifically to the community of interest comments and submissions that we already have. And those spreadsheets themselves, really difficult to go between the spreadsheets and the maps. So what we're about to do is create another component of this process that I don't know if it's tremendously value-added. So just being upfront now, I don't think it's of value, significant value, and would make a significant difference in how we draw the district lines. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hanson.
I don't think we want to dilute the information we already have from the sources that we actually reached out and asked to comment with the information from outside that what wasn't meant for us in the first place. I mean, I think we don't want to minimize the importance of what we've learned directly.
The motion that stands right now wouldn't actually integrate this data into the databases that we're using. So it would not dilute. So it would just say that we're going to link to it off of our website, if you will, so people could see it, but it's not going to be incorporated.
We're going to just look at it. We're not going to treat it as equal with the information we already have or in competition with. Something that violates, but the people from Hamul have just told us. I don't want to do that. I mean, I don't think it's fair to the people that use the procedures that we develop for everyone.
And Commissioner Inman, just to bridge us to the vote, because I don't have any other requests to speak. Do I understand correctly that you and Flow understand this to be, the link would be created, but in effect, for any additional action on it, you'd require further commission discussion?
Correct.
And that's why those words "in principle" were included in the memo. It establishes the record that we would like to do this. I'll add my own note as a commissioner. Frankly, if we had realized this, I think back in March or April, or even earlier when databases were being designed, not just in our commission or others, we might have had something, and it's certainly a lesson learned to include. And I know Commissioner Ponce has set up a good way for us to include that sort of lesson learned. But I think on the basis Commissioner Inman was just describing, it's not going to serve as an distraction for Flow. I have that correct. Good. Okay. Seeing no other commissioners requesting to speak, David, would you please call the roll for a vote?
Thank you, Chair Ben. Co-Vice Chair Katerina.
Aye.
Commissioner Inman.
Aye.
Commissioner Diaz, I believe, is absent. Co-Vice Chair Garcia.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Nay.
Commissioner Hanson.
Aye.
Commissioner Ponce.
Nay.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Krugliak.
Aye.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Commissioner Krugliak.
Nay.
Thank you. Commissioner Krugliak is a nay. Commissioner Dostal, I believe, is absent. Commissioner Russ.
Aye.
Commissioner Larson.
Nay.
Commissioner Larson is a nay. Chair Ben.
Aye.
Commissioner Serbin, I believe, is absent. If Commissioners Brown, Pons, Krugliak, and Larson voting no, all other commissioners who are present voting aye. There are seven votes in the affirmative for no's. The motion fails to achieve the required number of affirmative votes.
Thank you, David. And again, commissioners, thank you. Before I move on to the next item, I'll note that the time is 6:30. I'm going to keep a relatively close eye on the clock and likely ask the commissioners after one or two more agenda items how they would feel about moving to the closed session. But again, I would note several of the next few agenda items after the next one. In other words, eight and nine are likely relatively short. So if you can just be thinking about that as we work through the next item, I'd appreciate it. But without prejudice to the next item, item seven, a presentation of updated information related to the racially polarized voting or RPV study and legal assessment. This is, of course, key information to help inform the IRC about the Voting Rights Act implications of our mapping decisions, specifically to ensure that all voters have the opportunity to elect candidates of their choice in the final supervisory districts. We will, in just a moment, hear a presentation from Dr. Christian Gross, PhD, followed by comments from the IRC Special Voting Rights Act Council, Bruce Adelson. Before we proceed, though, I want to note that this agenda item included the possible approval of an updated racially polarized voting study. That study, regretfully, is not yet available for approval. I know our speakers will address the issue. I know there've been a lot of active discussion and work going on with regard to that study, and commissioners should, of course, feel free to ask any clarifying questions about the status of the study. But I do want to note, it is unlikely, at best, and in fact, probably simply not possible, to vote on the study tonight. And we will need to hear what we hear tonight and consider it a little bit in terms of when the study will be available and given the press of our schedule, when we will take it up. I have some other remarks I can offer, but I think the best thing to do right now would be to give the floor to Dr. Rose, followed by Mr. Adelson, and then we can have a discussion. Dr. Rose, are you online and ready?
Yes, hi.
Please go ahead.
And also, Dr. Masuoka was here as well, but I don't think she's able to, she's in as a panelist.
We'll bring her right over, Dr. Rose. Give me one minute.
I'm having some technical difficulties, too, so that might be good if we could get her.
Thank you, doctor, and thank you now for your patience. Okay, we have Natalie on, and I think you can both unmute if I see you both unmuted, so please proceed.
Okay, great. Natalie's gonna, Dr. Masuoka is gonna get started.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for inviting us back again. We are looking forward to answering questions. So since we last spoke to you, we wanted to move forward and engage in ability-elect analysis. And so, you know, where are we here? So from the last time we spoke, we provided an RPV analysis. I do understand that that still needs to be approved. In our RPV analysis, what we did find is that there's the existence of racial polarization. What our RPV report also found is that we identified who is a Latino candidate of choice, right? So to kind of review back what the report was, what we did in the report is we looked at elections for statewide office for the, over the last decade, and analyzed and identified which candidates are the Latino candidate of choice, and that there was racial polarization between Latinos and non-inspanic white voters. So what we are going to be doing with the ability-elect analysis is that we're going to focus on those elections where we found there's racial polarization and who we know is the Latino candidate of choice. And then take your draft maps and then overlay them on these historic elections that we've already analyzed and then try to effectively calculate the electoral performance of the Latino candidate of choice in these newly drawn districts. And so what this is, is this is a statistical method for confirming to what extent in the new draft maps the Latino candidate of choice would still get elected, right? Had you used the newly drawn maps.
Okay, thank you, Masuoka. Am I saying it right? Masuoka, right?
Yes, Masuoka. You pronounce every vowel.
I'm getting there. Thank you.
And then I was just gonna add a couple of things, if that's okay. Yeah, so the other thing that John had asked us to do is to present to you that information on what the districts, what maps that you've already looked at and which ones of the districts would be Latino ability to elect districts. And Natalie defined what those are, and I know that you're really interested in figuring out, like, what's the right number, right? Like, what's the number of the citizen voting age population Latino? What do you need to look at, right? And so one thing that I just want to step back on for a second is it's contextual. It's contextual based on the districts that you draw, right? So every district that you draw needs to be evaluated, just like Natalie said. So that it's not as if you can say this one specific number is the exact answer. But we do have some bounds that we can talk about today that can give you some guidance. And so, you know, John gave us the draft map one that you have because of all the draft maps that you have, that's the one that had the lowest Latino citizen voting age population. So if you want to think about that number, is that a number that would still be a Latino ability to elect district in that district that's drawn? The way you analyze this, as Natalie talks about, is you go through past elections that we identified in the RPV report at the state level that elected candidates of choice. So Javi Becerra ran for Attorney General California. He was preferred by Latino voters in San Diego County. Did he win in the district one that was drawn, right? Did another Latino candidate of choice who's run previously win in the district one that's been drawn? And so on, and then you repeat that. And we looked at that, and it's sort of simple arithmetic. Just is there a district where the candidates of choice of Latino voters win regularly? And if so, then that number is okay, right? That CVP number is going to be okay. And if Latino candidates lose, then it's not going to be okay. So we did look at draft map one, and if you look at district one in draft map one, all the Latino candidates of choice in past elections win. Even with a draft map, the number is forty-seven point eight percent CVP. So if in that particular map, forty-seven point eight percent Latino CVP still led to candidates of choice who are Latino winning, that includes candidates who lost in the election. So that includes, that includes elections like Loretta Sanchez, who ran for senate in 2016 against Kamala Harris. She was the Latino candidate of choice. She won more votes in that district than did Harris, right? So the one takeaway by analyzing this map, and it's not about this specific map per se. It's just of all the maps that were the initial draft maps that John showed us, that one had the lowest Latino CVP population. So if you want to think about forty-seven point eight Latino CVP, that is a district in the way it is drawn. So that could elect a Latino candidate of choice. And then you make the, you make the. you use past state elections, because those are the only elections that map onto new districts. We can't map supervisor elections from the past onto new districts because the lines have been drawn. But you make the, you make the logical conclusion that a Latino candidate of choice at the supervisor level could be elected in a district that was 47.8% Latino CVP. Now, we also looked at the current enacted map from 2012 to 20. That map, of course, had a 52% Latino CVP number. That map also elected 100% of Latino candidates of choice, right? So again, if you're thinking about a number, and I mentioned this when we were here a couple of weeks ago, you know, 52% is the current map in District One. That's, you know, that's, that is obviously working. You don't want to go too much above that, or you may start packing. And then the, the evaluation of Map One suggests 47.8% CVP may be a number that you can go to. But you want to be careful not to go too low, or you're going to be doing vote dilution, right? So the other thing I want you to think about is just the context, right? So the other thing with District One in that proposed map is there are also 6.1% black voters. There are also non-white voters who vote in coalition with Latino voters, based on our racial polarization analysis. So that's why the context matters, and I can't tell you this district number should be X all the time, right? Because you might move the district slightly somewhere else, where there's different voters, different white voters, different non-Latino voters. And so there's no silver bullet of this is an exact number. But this should give you a context of the number that you can work with, right? And similar, right, if you're looking, if you're thinking about other parts of the county, right, because we talked about the importance of the Latino growth last time we were here in the county. There's already one Latino ability to elect district in the county. That was there when the county was, you know, one-third Latino. Now, I think the county's about half Latino. If you're, if you're wanting to look at ability to elect in other districts beside District One, you also got to consider the context of the voters who are in the area.
Very good. Thank you both for that. Mr. Adelson.
Yes, sir. Good evening.
Please go ahead, or do you have anything to add, I should say first?
Yeah, I, I certainly appreciate that, and I appreciate hearing Christian and Natalie's presentation. I want to give you some cautionary notes and just some basic guardrail. I think that the, it's important to understand a couple of, of key legal components. The Supreme, US Supreme Court, at the end of the last redistricting cycle, made several decisions that really inform what happens to us this cycle. And not surprisingly, they focused on racially polarized voting, racial gerrymanders, and the packing of districts that Christian mentioned. What I would caution is that in the range that Christian presented, Natalie presented, 47.8 to 52%, that that is suggestive of a relatively safe range, based on the information we have today, for Latinos being elect, being able to elect candidates of choice. But there are some cautionary guardrail notes here. Going above 52% is something I would not recommend. The Supreme Court has struck down districts based on packing considerations and Fourteenth Amendment requirements, sometimes for as little as being 2% to 3% above this effectiveness threshold that Christian and Natalie established at 52%, understanding that that's the current district lines. Evaluating your draft map one to show Latinos being able to elect at 47.8% right now is the floor. That's a number that you may be able to go under, depending on other maps that you draft and other parts of the county that you may bring into your district. But I must stress that keep within those guardrails. Don't go beyond them. Because just like guardrails in real life on a highway, you go beyond the guardrails, we know what's going to happen. So that what happens is the Supreme Court, particularly as this court is constituted and as the current federal judiciary is constituted, in my opinion, they are somewhat less willing to accept remedies that are based on race, even though they are required by the Voting Rights Act and already contained in Fourteenth Amendment jurisprudence. But I've been advising all the jurisdictions that I work with, that this court is different. This federal judiciary is different than 10 years ago. And please keep in mind, as I said earlier, and I think we had talked about the last time we were together, the court did put down some very good guidelines, requirements, in the last round of redistricting about essentially how, what is the percentage of minority voters that you need to ensure compliance with the Voting Rights Act so that minorities can elect candidates of choice? And in one opinion, the court was, the court said essentially, the supposition was made that 50.1% was needed to elect candidates of choice. The court determined that the actual percentage was 48%. 2% difference. Court struck down the district on the Fourteenth Amendment, equal protection, one person, equal protection racial gerrymander consideration. So please be mindful of those guardrails. Stay within those guardrails, and you're probably looking pretty good as you do additional drafts and as you go into new areas that haven't been analyzed, as was mentioned previously. Having that analysis done is essential to ensure you're staying within guardrails, even if the guardrails have to shift a little bit, you're still going to be on safe ground. So as I said, 47.8 to 52, those are our parameters for now. And I would advise that you stay within them. Staying within them is, is going to provide you with a good measure of assurance that you're not running afoul of the Fourteenth Amendment or the Voting Rights Act. So that's my advice. That's my opinion for now. That's based on, as I said, the seminal Supreme Court decisions from the last cycle, the information I've seen from Natalie and Christian. And that's advice that I think can, can get you going as far as doing additional drafts and looking at additional analysis. So I'm happy to answer any questions if you have.
Well, thanks to all three of you for that. I will say that it is reassuring to hear the different perspectives without seeing some of the more outrageous effects we've seen in other states. And I'll leave it at that. There's, this is good to hear, so appreciate that. Before we turn to Commissioners, let me ask David if there are any requests from the public to speak on this agenda.
Thank you, Chair Ben. No request in advance of today's meeting, but if any member of the public would like to address the commission on this item, you're welcome to do so by raising a virtual hand, press the raise hand button on Zoom, or pressing star nine if you're dialing in by phone. I don't see any virtual hands, so that concludes public comment on this item, Chair Ben. I'm afraid you're muted.
Sorry. Thank you very much, David. Again, it's a slight amendment to our usual procedures. I'm not going to ask for a motion because there is no action to take tonight. So we will treat this, for the moment, as an informational item. Commissioners, of course, can make a motion if they're so interested. But for right now, I'm just going to turn to clarifying questions and comments, calling first on Commissioner Krugliak and then Commissioner Pons. Commissioner Krugliak, please.
Thank you. I was just curious as to why, and I'm sure this is just, you know, how it's done. Why political affiliation, political party affiliation is not taken into the modeling as a covariate? So that you can really understand what truly is racial versus what is political party-driven?
That's a really good question. And the, the, so what we would do in political science, separate from racial polarization analysis, like if I'm writing a book or an article Natalie and I would be doing, we would be taking a lot of factors into account. But the racial polarization analysis doesn't bring that to bear and focuses just on the race of the candidate as the independent variable, and then the outcome of the election as the dependent variable. And, you know, maybe Bruce can talk a little bit about that. There's some older cases that debated this, and the, as I recall, settled on that as the measurement is to have the, the regression be an independent variable of race, the dependent variable being the election outcome. But then in terms of the ability to elect analysis, the reason you don't just look at one election is for the reasons you're, you're implying, right? The reason you need to go and look at a whole bunch of different Latino candidates of choice across elections is, is that that's going to make things more confident. And then also it depends on the context, right? So if you go to a place like Florida, South Florida, Latino candidates of choice are sometimes Republicans, right? And so if you were doing this analysis in South Florida, you would look at the, whoever won, regardless of their political party, and whoever was the candidate of choice of Latino voters, regardless of political party. So that's one of the reasons that you consider race and ethnicity is the only independent variable in the, in the analysis.
Okay, after that, just one of the additional items that we talked about the first time. Remember, this is a process driven by data. Election analysis, election results in the law. This is a legal-driven process. The Voting Rights Act does not take partisan politics into consideration. Partisanship is not a protected category under federal law. So yes, there have been cases from quite some time ago that looked at the partisan aspect. That may arise in the future. That is not current law. It could, as I said, it could very well arise sometime during the cycle, but that's not the law as it stands today.
Okay, thank you for that. Commissioner Pons, Commissioner Hanson, Commissioner Inman, did you have a hand up? No. Okay, so Commissioner Pons, then Commissioner Hanson.
Okay, and thanks for the briefing and the discussion. You know, I did my own analysis on the citizen voting age populations. And I'm concerned because there's only, there was only one district, and that was District One, where the Hispanic population really did well. The other four districts, the white population outdid all of the other demographics by either two to one and upward of two, six to one. Makes it nearly impossible to overcome those odds. So my question to you is this. How do we sort of level load that demographic so that there is not just a consideration for the white demographic and the Hispanic, but all the other four demographics in between, where the numbers are at like 1%, 7%? They can't compete unless there's a coalition between all of those groups to even have a vote, let alone a candidate of choice. But because, and I'm going to go to the Marv Foster map, because now we know what the density of those ethnic populations are and where they are, we can actually sort of draw boundary lines that would take in consideration of those imbalances or inequalities. So if we do that, is that in violation of anything? Or is it respectful of the Voting Rights Act through the lens of racial polarized voting?
Let me start very quickly. I think that the, looking at your, the county's overall population, looking at the current district performance, and yes, you do have populations that are relatively small to create coalition districts that can provide an opportunity to elect with populations that might be, as you said, 1%, 7%. I think might be difficult to do. I wouldn't foreclose that, that that's a policy option, if that's something you'd like to pursue. But keep in mind that coalition districts typically will have one relatively large minority group, whether it's 20%, 25%, there's no magic number about that. And then other groups combining, voting cohesively, voting for the same candidates in, in a number that provide an opportunity to elect. Now, I have to stress, the Voting Rights Act does not require electoral outcomes. It does not guarantee that any one person, one group, one anything can elect. It's an opportunity to elect. Please keep that in mind. I, I run into that issue a lot where there's a supposition that we must be, this, there must be a guarantee. There must be some absolute, it's opportunity. So if you can craft a coalition district that through analysis shows that there is an opportunity to elect with a coalition of several groups, some of which may be relatively small, more power to you if that's an item that you'd like to consider. But remember, it's all analysis-driven. So that if you have a supposition that this can work, that that's something that has to be analyzed to prove it.
Absolutely. I think we just have to give due consideration to that itself. We have to, we must, because the numbers bear themselves out. When you read the numbers in the CPAV, they're there for you to see. And if we don't give due consideration that only in one district there's a minority, which would be the Hispanic votes, that can actually get that 100% selection of their candidates, while the other four districts are heavily weighed in the other end of the spectrum, then we just have to question and challenge that. Because if we don't, then we just drawing lines arbitrarily based on population and not the makeup and the populace of those populations.
Yeah, well, the other thing I wanted to add is the, I mean, if you think about the data that we talked about two weeks ago, and that's in our report, and some of the stuff we've done in response to your question from two weeks ago, Commissioner Pons, the, the, the county has changed. 10 years ago, the county had one Latino ability to elect district when the population of the county was not as diverse as it is today, right? So you have to think about if there is, if a jingles condition, can you numerically draw more than one district? That would be majority-minority? And do you have a coalition of minority groups? Like, do the minorities vote together, right? And so we do have some evidence to show that black voters and Latino voters vote together. So that's something that you, you would want to consider. You would, should look at the report carefully in regards to Asian and Latino voter coalitions that we, that we gave. I think that's important to look at closely. The, but in terms of your own, you know, the data, considering the data, I want to echo one thing Bruce said on, from a data standpoint. If you do have a coalition district in terms of the ability to elect, I'm not speaking about San Diego County now, not having looked at this. But I agree with the point that Bruce made about usually there needs to be a group that's fairly large that votes in coalition with another group. And that may be partly with white crossover voters who are willing to vote with the Latino for, or for minority candidate of choice, excuse me. Or it might be multiple groups of minority voters. And I don't want to get into the legal part as much, but, but Bruce, I don't know if you want to get into that part, but there's also sort of like the conditions of coalitions are coalition districts, coalition majority-minority districts, if you're thinking about that for a second district, is more complex. I guess I'll just say that from a data standpoint.
To Christian's point, I agree that they're more complex and that you need sizable populations. And I also want to point out too, we kind of piggybacking on what Christian was talking about. As you make policy determinations about what districts you want to draw and how to include certain populations, it's also important to remember not to do a reach-out, a stretch, just to encompass minority groups. That, and, and typically, if you Google racial gerrymander, you'll see some great examples in maps. Usually, they, they don't pass the visual test, but it is very important that you not do that reach-out, that stretch, that what I like to call the robot arm to grab some a minority group to try to create a coalition district or a majority-minority district. That routinely does not work. And I think that in the current federal judiciary, that's not something I would, I would even venture to, to take a risk about. So you have to have a compact district, Christian was talking about this. Compact, particularly when it comes to bringing in or including various minority groups that are protected under the US Constitution and the Voting Rights Act.
And I think Commissioner Pons is also bringing up that, you know, there's a lot of focus on the District One. But, you know, our, if you look at the report, there is racial polarization in other parts of the county. And so maybe thinking beyond District One and thinking about how we could draw districts that protect voters in other parts of the county is something that I think your question is bringing up and something that the commission may want to think about. Because there, we are showing that there is racial polarization. And you think about, you know, especially in the north, north side, where with District Five, where Latino currently in the last 10 years, the Latino candidate of choice was not, did not have the opportunity to win. So I think that that's another point to be made.
Commissioner Hanson.
I had a question, but I wanted to comment on this last discussion. We have a perfect example in District Five with the city of Escondido. When that one was removed from District Five, When that one was removed from District Five, they lost their ability to elect a Latino. So the public has been very clear about asking us to include Escondido with the other areas of of. Latino uh population so that they can. So I think we've certainly been aware of that and and I think if you look at not the first maps, but the draft maps. You'll see that that's an issue.
Oh, I'm I'm sorry for giving.
No, go ahead.
Richard, that's a great point and that that also leads me to another thought that in. If you're trying to craft, whether it's a majority, another majority minority district or a collision district, including or not including. Municipalities, cities can have a significant impact, both positive and negative. As you suggested, leaving this city out may have diluted minority voting strength, weakened minority voting strength. On the other hand, if you include a city that has. Significantly different population and in the presence, as Natalie said, of racially polarized voting, that will also affect. Minorities being able to elect candidates of choice. That's a regular problem that I encounter. Including cities, including jurisdictions, without an understanding of their electoral history and performance. Can and do definitely dilute the electoral power of um minorities in any given area.
My other question had to do with the Asian population. If we were trying to just create a. Opportunity for the Asian population to be able to uh elect representative of their choice. Would we go back and use that same forty-eight, fifty-two percent? Number when evaluating a different group?
Sort of. So I would say you would you would do the ability to elect analysis on Asian American candidates of choice, right? So our report shows that Asian Americans are a cohesive group in San Diego County. And where you to try to draw an Asian American um uh ability to elect district. Or an Asian American coalition district with another group, you would need to do the same analysis we talked about with Latino candidates of choice. You would need to go look at our report, or we would do this for you for the maps. The Asian American candidates of choice who won previously, map it onto the district and see, does this actually elect an Asian American candidate of choice or not? Um that it would be the the e- even more important than CVAP or VAP, that that is also important. Um because it factors in um turnout and other factors of that nature. Um to see who's showing up to vote. Um the who wins in a district matters, right? So the showing that a district would elect an Asian American candidate of choice would be important if you were interested in drawing an Asian American ability to elect district.
Thanks.
I have Commissioner Pons and no other speakers, so I'm going to wrap it up after him, unless there are any other requests to speak on this agenda item. Very good. Commissioner Pons, please.
Yeah, I know we want to wrap it up. Listen, this is critically important. I mean, previously we were just drawing lines based on populations and communities. Communities of interest, but now we have some very detailed data about where those populations and what those populations consist of. This is the hard part. And I know we can't draw Serpentine districts and impacted and pack and crack districts. I understand that. But we must give due consideration to those to those ethnicities and races in between. Um the Hispanic and the white population, we must. And those numbers are there. We just have to think creatively and critically as Commissioner Inman said, we should think critically about what we are doing. And this is the time to think critically and act boldly about giving the San Diego citizens and the public what they deserve. And we just have to look for balance. We don't want to disadvantage any group. But we have to think about things on balance. This is just my point of view. But thank you very much and I'm done, Chair Ben.
Thank you very much for that. And I think Commissioner and others who spoke, combining that. With the data-driven analysis and legal requirements gives us a good way forward. So I think. The discussion's been useful, the expertise has been remarkably useful. Um I really look forward to getting the study as soon as possible because we have limited meeting time as well. Uh to to get that discussed, but what I do really appreciate today and want to make sure. Um our councils and experts agree on it is that this has been a discussion. That we can take into consideration for the November first meeting, not only in reviewing maps and public input further. But in our next round of instructions to our demographer on what maps we want to see drawn. And to that point, I think this agenda item, the earlier discussions have been very, very useful. I'm grateful for that. Dr. Rose, Dr. Masooka, Mr. Adelson, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
All right. It is now seven oh seven. We have a couple of items that may be handled in relatively short order. Um but it is also uh not a bad breaking point in the sense that we've just had a good discussion related to the mapping. So let me just take a sense from the commission nods would be fine. Um would you like to move to the closed session now? Okay, I see enough there that we will move to the procedure for that, which which is in effect a suspension of the rules. So at this time, to be formal, um first I want to note that Commissioner Diaz has joined us. Welcome. Uh given the hour and the importance of agenda items twelve and thirteen, that is the recess for the closed session. As well as uh the report out to the reconvening in open session. I'd like to request a motion to suspend the rules and consider items twelve and thirteen immediately after this motion. I'll note that such a motion requires a two-thirds vote by roll call. Do I have such a motion to suspend the rules? Inman and second from Commissioner Larson, thank you. Any discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown, please.
Can we have a three-minute bathroom break?
I I was literally just about to mention, if we could have this vote, um we'll probably have about a ten-minute break while we. Uh Zoom conferences, et cetera. So with your permission, let's move to this vote and then I'll explain how we'll transition. Any other discussion? Thank you. If not, David, would you please call the roll for a vote on this motion?
Thank you, Chair Ben. Commissioner Krugliak?
Hi.
Commissioner Pons?
Hi.
Commissioner Dostal, I believe is still absent. Commissioner Diaz?
Hi.
Co-Vice Chair Caterina?
Hi.
Commissioner Serbin is absent. Commissioner Hanson?
Hi.
Chair Ben?
Hi.
Commissioner Chen?
Hi.
Commissioner Brown?
Hi.
Commissioner Larson?
Hi.
Co-Vice Chair Garcia?
Hi.
Commissioner Russ? Uh Commissioner Inman?
Hi.
Chair Ben, that motion passes unanimously with all commissioners who are present voting a.
Very good. Thank you, commissioners. So bear with me just a couple of minutes while we tee things up. So we now are moving to Agenda Item Twelve, which requires the commission to recess from this meeting after we accept any. Request for public uh statements, but we'll re-recess from this meeting and convene in closed session. To discuss public employment of legal counsel. Commissioners have been emailed a link to the separate Zoom meeting for closed session. As always, I'm sure IRC staff is ready to help you if there are any technical problems. In just a moment, I'll ask commissioners to log off of this meeting and join the closed session on the separate Zoom conference. But before we recess, I'll ask Dave if there are any requests from the public to speak on this agenda item.
No requests in advance of uh today's meeting, but if any member of the public would like to speak on the closed session items, you're welcome to do so. Please raise a virtual hand by pressing the raise hand button on Zoom or by pressing star nine if you're dialing in by phone. Not seeing any requests to speak. That concludes public comment on this item, Chair Ben.
Thank you very much. Uh for those members of the public leaving now, thanks for joining us. Information about our next meetings will be posted on the website and also discussed when we convene in open session. So I invite you to use the website to find out any information you need regarding our next meeting on Monday, November first, starting at five PM. With that, I'll now ask, oh, and again, I'll just mention the website remains www.drawyourcommunity.com. I now ask the commissioners leave this meeting and join the separate Zoom meeting for closed session. This public meeting of the IRC will continue, both for any reportable actions out of the closed session and to return to our remaining agenda items. During this time that we're in recess for the closed session, staff will put up a slide notifying the public that the commission is meeting in closed session. We will now take a ten-minute break to allow everyone to connect. Is is ten minutes sufficient time? Do you need fifteen? Good, we'll go with ten. Thank you very much.
David, I don't have a a separate meeting link. Where do we go to that?
Commissioner Channel asks you to um recheck email, but I'll ask staff to get in touch with you as soon as you log off and make sure you have the right link.
Okay, thank you.
Is any, is there anybody else who has that problem? Commissioner Pons, Co-Vice Chair Garcia. Okay, Barbara, I'll ask you, I'll ask you to just resend the link to all. It should be there momentarily. And right now it's seven thirteen, so we will plan to start the closed session at seven twenty-three.
Eric, if I may just remind commissioners, um in your calendar invite the the link you had for this meeting, it's right below it, but I'm happy to resend it out.
Right.
Thank you, Barbara. With that, we are now in recess. See everyone in the closed session at seven twenty-three.
Russ, Commissioner Russ, how are you? You're muted, my friend. Oh, it's closed. Anyway, it's good to see you. Hey, I can't hear you, but at some point we uh we should just sync up. Because there's some great things happening in the Navy now, and I think you'd want to know about them if you don't already know about them, but. There are some great things and I just want to share them with you at some point. We don't have to splice the main brace, but we can still chat about it, okay? Take care.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Commissioner Brown, I can hear you.
Thank you, David.
Can you hear me, David? Barbara Hanson.
Yes, I can hear you, Commissioner Hanson.
Thank you.
David, this is Jack Russ. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Commissioner Russ.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David, do you know what time we're supposed to reconvene?
There isn't a specific time when closed session is completed and everybody is ready. And it looks like everybody is back by my.
I thought, I thought it was.
Sorry, it was nine forty. I'm just trying to get the reportable action squared away. I'll be right back.
No problem.
Okay, I'll ask staff to take down the screen. Get back to full screen. Thank you. Good. Commissioners, I need to, sorry. Convene in just a moment. Okay. This meeting of the County San Diego Independent Redistricting Commission is reconvened at nine forty-four. We move immediately to item thirteen, reportable actions, and I will turn to IRC lead staff, Barbara Jimenez.
Thank you, Chair Bane. Good evening, everyone. I now would like to proceed with the report from closed session. The Independent Redistricting Commission convened into closed session today at seven eighteen PM until nine twenty-nine PM. On item twelve regarding public employment of legal counsel with nine commissioners voting aye, the Independent Redistricting Commission approved to retain Nielsen Merkison for both general counsel services and expert counsel services with an instruction to amend counsel's current contract. That concludes the report from closed session.
Thank you, Barbara. Let me just preview because I can only imagine how commissioners are feeling right now. We will move expeditiously through the existing agenda. Through the rest of the agenda with possible tabling to be considered. But let me turn first to the next item on the agenda because I think we can deal with it fairly quickly in the kind hands of co-vice chair Garcia. The statutory required draft final report. Rosette, the floor is yours.
Yes, we're working on that. I think we will have a draft with many of the pieces sort of put in place. Perhaps by the November thirteenth meeting. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but I mean over email or through staff, through staff. Thank you.
Thank you. David, are there any requests from the public to, for comment on this agenda?
Thank you, Chair Bane. Not in advance of today's meeting, but if any member of the public would like to address the commission on this item, you're welcome to do so by raising a virtual hand at this time. Not seeing any virtual hands. That concludes public comment on this item, Chair Bane.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, not seeing any questions. We move on to agenda item nine, monthly budget update. Staff reported attachments were included with agenda materials. This month, we will, we had already planned to dispense with staff remarks, although Nicole is certainly available and other IRC staff to answer any questions the commissioners may have. First though, David, are there any requests from the public to speak on this agenda item?
None in advance of today's meeting, but if any member of the public would like to address the commission, you're welcome to do so by raising a virtual hand at this time. Not seeing any virtual hands. That concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you. Any comments for clarification or questions from commissioners? Very good. Thank you very much. Now, item ten is next, a preliminary report on the IRC's pre-mapping public hearings and lessons learned, as well as a presentation on targeted outreach for upcoming draft map public hearings presented by the IRC's outreach contractor, Asian Business Association San Diego, or ABA SD. That said, I would not be surprised if there was a move to table this item for later consideration. There were agenda, I'm sorry, there were written materials on most of this included in your agenda packages. What I would suggest commissioners is if we don't mind, because ABA SD has taken the time to be here, I'd like to ask Jason to make just the barest bones highlights with the understanding that we will find a way to address and include additional comments at an upcoming meeting. Without objection.
Jason, floor is yours. Certainly, I know you have all had a very long evening and very appreciative of the consideration regarding that. So we do have, I know you have the agenda materials there. It was a twenty-eight page document. I can quickly go over some of the highlights within that, then I can give the abbreviated high level version of summary.
If we do it in, say, two to three minutes, would that be possible?
I could, I could definitely do my best. I'm a quick talker and I know you're all quick listeners, so I will definitely do my best.
Please go on.
Thank you, Chair. For the public's edification, this is the document that is attached to the agenda. It is a twenty-eight page document which highlights the summary of the work that we've been doing. I will quickly go through this and then switch to the slide of the summary for work done and the next steps. This had the summary of public hearings. In here included something I'd like to highlight is that we coordinated and hosted eight out of eight pre-mapping public hearings from August twelfth to September twenty-fifth at a different locations through five different districts. Three of the meetings were general meetings and five are district-specific meetings, one in each district. We will be going over in a subsequent high level of what worked well and what's next. This is included in the document was a summary of outreach activities. Some examples of the social media flyers. The volunteer survey that was provided, which also pushed to QR, social media accounts below that. Some of the publications we engaged with. As you can see, all that. Some of the summary outreach metrics. I'll go over some of these items in the subsequent documents. For those of you that are good at tilting your heads, this is probably better for you to look at in the document and being able to turn it the other way. These are some of the other supplemental docs for the performance metrics. These were the ads as well for television, for the schedules and timing when they were produced. The email campaigns, the community-based organizations, the tribes, followed by the chambers of commerce's planning groups and special districts. The pre-mapping public hearing metrics. Communities of interest. For those meetings. So that was the presentation that's included in the, in your agenda packet. I will now share the high level. This is only a few slides, a handful of slides, so this should go fairly quickly.
And I just want to confirm all that material is also posted on the IRC website, correct?
Correct. So this is the summary of the pre-mapping public hearings and success metrics. Noted here during the pre-public hearings, we coordinated and hosted pre-map, eight pre-map public hearings throughout all five supervisory districts with a total of three hundred and fifty-six attendees, virtual and in-person. What we learned based on the attendance at the pre-mapping public hearings, the public attended virtually three to one, based on the surveys, once again, these are volunteer surveys. Sixty-six percent of the participant public submitted input via ecomments. Thirty-six percent of the surveys received were from the age range of sixty-one to seventy-five, and more than sixty-five percent of the surveys were submitted by women with fifty-seven and a half percent of the surveys submitted by white individuals. What worked well, coordinating with community-based organizations digitally through email newsletters and organic resharing for social media posts, for example, Facebook, as many have heard as now, Meta, had reached audiences of over two hundred and eighty thousand. This was organic and through ABA SD, the CBOs and media outlets. For targeted outreach and communication with CBOs and trusted messengers who had agreed to forward and share information was also very successful. Our CBO newsletter reach went out to over twenty thousand subscribers. And regarding the online ads for digital presence, these were based on click-through rates. And according to our online vendor, the average click-through rate for a similar campaign to create awareness for an event or issue is typically between point zero six percent to points or eight percent compared to our, our campaign, which came at a higher rate of point one nine percent. The total number of online ad impressions was also at an impressive over two point five million or just over a hundred and sixteen thousand evenly targeted per supervisory district. What's next? During the draft map public hearing period, we focused our outreach efforts on communities with lower engagement such as District Four through targeted emails to community-based organizations and engagement through additional targeted MOUs. CBOs will continue to be asked to push out meeting information via emails and share our social media posts. Will also be working on teaching the public on best ways to submit the most effective public comment. We've created a new informational flyer, which I will quickly share. For the edification, this was just recently approved by both IRC staff and council. And this will be disseminated starting as quickly as tomorrow. We've already gotten ahead of this, so we will see this shared very quickly here. Also, what's next? We're securing some great op-ed opportunities through existing relationships we have, such as with the San Diego Union Tribune, LGBTQ County News, Black San Diego Magazine, among others. Will be promoting through Peachjar, an online digital flyer service provider. Many of you may be familiar with them, utilized by school districts. Will also have community group presentations by the commission to planning groups, town councils, et cetera. So far, we have about eleven to twelve who have expressed interest in these presentations. We will be needing the willing participation of our wonderful commissioners here for these presentations and of course, supported by IRC staff. I know that at some point, Chair Bane will share more on the following regarding this.
Okay, I'm gonna do it. I'm going to do it right now. Commissioners, we have a number of opportunities, including with some of the very planning group representatives that you heard from tonight, at least one of whom I think either rescheduled their meeting or ducked out of their meeting to come to our meeting. So in the spirit of mutual cooperation, please, there should be a chart. I don't know if Jason's going to show it or not, but you may have it in your agenda package of opportunities coming up, I think with eight or nine planning groups in the next week or two. There we go. There we are. So if you could take a look at that, note that several of them are virtual. The materials are all prepared. Barbara, I'm not misleading on that, right? This is much like the educational tour. We've got a package we can give you. You can present and it will sure be appreciated by all these different audiences and others. But if any of these particularly spark your interest, if I could ask commissioners to respond as soon as possible and certainly by Friday noon, tomorrow noon, on any expressions of interest. At that point, we'll take any expressions we have. We will fill in the gaps and get moving because as you can see, several of these groups are meeting next week. So if you can please take a look at your calendars and advise staff by tomorrow noon. It would be greatly appreciated. Jason, thank you for moving so fast on that.
Thank you, Chair. Have this back up in a second.
Chair Bane, while Jason does that, I just want to mention we've received additional requests from this document, what's in the document, so we'll be happy to send that out with a reminder to, to sign up or let us know which of the sessions the commissioners would like to hold.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much for that, Chair Barbara. Working with Commissioner Serbin, we've also a webinar in progress as a tool to be used as part of the outreach to solicit more maps from the public, so more to come on that as well. Some of the rationale, what led to us focusing more on District Four. This had come up several times. Commissioners did state at several meetings that comments in person, virtually and ecomments received from the public were lacking from District Four. And additionally, every other district had two meetings and District Four had one during the pre-mapping public hearing phase. We wanted to ensure that there was equitable meetings per district countywide. Regarding targeted outreach, subcontractors for targeted outreach will be asked to share meeting information and maps via email to their members and database and social media outlets. They will also be asked to report back metrics associated with the email distribution, social media reach and engagements. This is a partial list of some of the folks that we're working with currently and or will be want to edify that some have not been or have been reached out to and are in the process. With that, as well for the targeted outreach, these are the additional CBOs regarding targeted outreach. Why did we choose our specific contractors for this outreach? The list of organizations we've identified and have intimate knowledge, are trusted messengers and extremely connected with their communities, as many of you know here. We have worked with some through either an existing relationship or formal MOU and others we are excited to work with going forward at the recommendation of our current partners, commissioner recommendations or requests, and also based on reputational performance from some of these groups. And some of the additional groups taking note of some of the commissioner comments, making sure that we're also engaging houses of worship or at least the faith-based community. Obviously, our educational partners I mentioned as well, the town councils, which I know some of you will be speaking to and planning groups. And of course, the other groups such as the statewide and municipal redistricting commissions as well. And that concludes my presentation. I'm not sure how many minutes that was, Chair, but hopefully it was under five.
However, long and when it was because of my extension. So, very good. Thank you for that. David, are there any requests from the public to speak on this agenda?
We did have an advanced request, but I don't believe that person is online any longer. So if any member of the public would like to address the commission, please raise a virtual hand at this time. Not seeing any virtual hands. That concludes public comment, Chair Bane.
Good. Commissioners, I think you can see for yourself some of the highlights on various issues that have been raised before in our discussions. Again, I'll request to dispense with that for tonight. I'm sure we can integrate that into our discussions on November first. But in particular, Commissioner Pons, I think you've so eloquently highlighted the need for that kind of additional outreach, and I think ABA SD has provided at least a good start on the reply. And I think that's of concern to all of us. So thank you all for your patience in going over that. Jason, thank you very much. With that, we move on. The next item on the agenda is just item eleven, discussion and possible approval of enhancements to the IRC website and associated expense. I would entertain a motion to table this to either November, our November first or November thirteenth meeting. Do I have such a motion? Commissioner Inman, do I have a second? Commissioner Pons, thank you. Any discussion? Commissioner Diaz? Commissioner Diaz?
Um, this would not, these enhancements would not affect the posting of any of the draft maps.
Correct.
The timing? Okay.
Very well. David, do we need a recorded vote for tabling? Sorry, Commissioner Hanson first. You're muted.
When I read about this a couple of weeks ago, it occurred to me that the website has done its job and to invest more money in it six weeks before the end of the effort seems unnecessary.
Yeah, I appreciate the point. For right now, we are tabling the item rather than discussing it, but thank you for that. Any other discussion? David, should we move to a roll call vote?
Um, yes. Commissioner Pons?
Aye.
Commissioner Krugliak? Commissioner Krugliak?
Aye.
Thank you. COVICE Chair Caterina?
Aye.
Commissioner Dustal, I believe is absent. Chair Bane?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Inman?
Aye.
Commissioner Diaz?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Serbin, I believe is absent. COVICE Chair Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Russ?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously with all commissioners who are present voting aye.
Very good, Commissioners, and we will take that up. Very well. That concludes the business of the County San Diego Independent Redistricting Commission for this evening. Our next meeting will be on Monday, November 1st, starting at 5:00 PM. We will begin with the IRC's first draft map public hearing, during which we will hear public comments and submissions regarding maps. When that hearing ends, we will move to an IRC regular meeting to review IRC draft maps five through eight and provide flow analytics, our demographer, with instructions for the next set of draft maps. These sessions will be held at the City of Chula Vista City Hall in the council chambers, building A, located at 276 Fourth Avenue in Chula Vista, zip code 91910, and also virtually via Zoom. I also want to note that the State Citizens Redistricting Commission is holding a visualization meeting for Southern California tomorrow, October 29th, beginning at 9:30 AM. And continues its meetings virtually and in Sacramento throughout next week. You can see their website on the bottom of this slide. We draw the line, ca.org. Of course, our website continues to have all information on draft maps, meeting links and more details on our work. That's www.joyourcommunity.com. With that, and seeing no other business, this meeting is adjourned at 10:05 PM. Thank you very much, Commissioners, and thank you those in the public who stayed with us. Have a good evening.
Nighty night.